It's the Holocaust. People fucking were slaughtered en masse. I don't know like, why this is your priority? Definitely, when we talk about this book in specifics, this book did something a lot of books about the Holocaust can't. And that is grip you in and actually pull you in and describe it in a way that is consumable to children. It is very difficult to take an event like the Holocaust and make it consumable for children. And they took one of the best examples, a Pulitzer Prize winning example, and banned it. This story has me mad. Legitimately angry, okay? So, have any of you ever read the book Mouse? Or Moss? I never know how to pronoun- I never knew how to correct it, correctly pronounce it. It's a book. Are you familiar with it? Very famous book series. Uh, it was released in the eighties and nineties uh, by an author whose parents uh, went through the Holocaust, whose mom uh, killed themselves at the age of twenty. Uh, it's a very sad book series, uh, but it's meant to be because you know, it's about the Holocaust. And it describes in very, very good fashion the Holocaust and the events that led up to it. And it won a Pulitzer Prize. It's a really, really good book. It's a graphic novel, to be completely like, like accurate. But it's very, very good. And a good resource for somebody, I would say, who isn't very interested in say like textbook history. There's a lot of people who don't want to like open up a textbook and read very slowly, a very bland retelling of events that isn't very personal or descriptive. You get what I'm saying? And Mouse, uh, by Art Spiegelman kind of filled that gap for a lot of young people learning about the Holocaust in the, in the nineties, two thousands, and I would even say like twenty teens, cuz like I, I know of the book. And it's a very, very good book. Very good. And I recommend it to anybody who hasn't touched it before. Or anybody who has any interest in learning about the Holocaust. But isn't very interested about reading like a textbook to learn about history. Well sadly, it seems that the state of Tennessee, at least the, at least the Tennessee officials, don't seem to agree with me. Because the school board in Tennessee, the school board in Tennessee, that is, has banned the teaching of the novel about the Holocaust. Banned it. The school board voted unanimously, that means ten to zero in this case, to remove the Pulitzer Prize winning graphic novel from classrooms because it contains swear words according to minutes from the meeting. Now, I'm about to get angry, right? I'm like pretty angry. But let's just read it quick. Let's just read part of the article quick before I get into why every single person who voted to ban this book is a window licking knuckle dragger, okay? "A school board in Tennessee voted unanimously this month to ban Mouse, a Pulitzer Prize winning graphic novel about the Holocaust, from being taught in its classrooms because it contains material that board members said was inappropriate for students." According to minutes of its meeting, "The ten person board in McMinn County, Tennessee, voted on January tenth to remove the book from the eighth grade curriculum." Members of the board said the book, which portrays Jews as mice and Nazis as cats, and recounting the author's parents' experience during the Holocaust, "contained inappropriate curse words and a depiction of a naked character." By God. By the way, we're not talking about like five year olds here, or six or seven or eight year olds. We're talking about the eighth grade. This is eighth grade curriculum we're talking about right now. We're not talking about like toddlers here, okay? Maybe if we were talking about like kindergarten, or first or second, third, fourth, hell, maybe even fifth, but that's stretching it. Fifth grade, I could somewhat understand it. We're talking about eighth graders. Also, somebody brought up a good point in chat, animals are always naked. A Jew, thanks for the prime, Barrow. "There is some rough objectionable language in this book," said Lee Parkinson, the director of schools for McMinn County, Eastern Tennessee, according to minutes of the meeting. Art Spiegelman, the author of Mouse, told CB, uh CNBC, that he was baffled by the decision. "It's leaving me with my jaw open, like what?" He said in an interview on Wednesday, the day before Holocaust Remembrance Day. Oh, that's another thing. Today is January twenty seventh. It is Holocaust Remembrance Day today. Just something to chew on for a second. Uh, probably if you're watching this on YouTube, it is no longer Holocaust Remembrance Day. But still, just wanted to throw that out there. "Mr. Spiegelman published her first volume of books in nineteen eighty-six and the second in nineteen ninety-one." The first volume of the book, that is. "The graphic novel received a special Pulitzer in nineteen ninety-two." "Mr. Spiegelman's parents survived Auschwitz. Uh, his mother died by suicide when Spiegelman was twenty." "The board's vote was reported by a local news outlet. The decision comes as the Anti-Defamation League and others have warned of a recent rise in anti-Semitic incidents, and have made a broader movement to ban books that address certain ideas about race, as well as those that address sex and LGBTQ issues." Okay, um, during the McMinn County discussion of Mouse, this is the shit that pisses me off, by the way. This right here is what really got me angry. "Multiple board members discussed redacting profanity or said that they did not object to the teaching, the history of the Holocaust." One of the board members, Mike Cochran, said he objected to the language and depiction of nudity. This is what the art in it looks, by the way. "We don't need the stuff to teach kids history," he said, according to the minutes. "We can teach them history and we can teach them graphic history. We can tell them exactly what happened, but we don't need all the nakedness and all the other stuff." Okay, so, one last passage I want to read at the end, okay? "It was unclear what book would replace Mouse in the curriculum." Feels like something maybe you should, you know, square away before you start banning books. "At one point during the board meeting, one of the members, Rob Shamblyn," by the way, this member still voted for it to be banned, just throwing it out there, "asked what other books the school would have to ban if it banned this one on the basis of foul language." "Classic books on the elementary school reading list, such as The Whipping Boy and To Kill a Mockingbird, also included foul language, a school principal said. I would also say, um, you know, anything by Mark Twain." Probably, you know, there's a famous Mark Twain book, it has the N-word in it. N-word Jim, you know, maybe that would be banned too, since I would say that's probably not a very appropriate word. But of course, uh, the chairman Sharon Brown said, "That falls uh, under another topic for another day." So he just ignores the question. So I'm just gonna say, I'm gonna be blunt here, okay? So number one, they don't have an answer to this question. And it's clear, because there's a lot of books that we need to teach young people for teaching a decent um, perspective of American history, like the novels of Mark Twain and To Kill a Mockingbird. I mean, come on. That they would have to ban if we use this logic. They ignore this question, cuz if they accepted the reality of this question, they would realize what while they're doing is uh, very stupid. But the main point I want to hit at here is it's the Holocaust. The Holocaust is an inherently graphic, disgusting, and terrible event. Your main concern when teaching about the Holocaust, one of the worst moments in the history of humanity, is if somebody says fuck or shit or is naked once in the book. Jews were systematically slaughtered. Six million during the Holocaust. Jews, the disabled, homosexuals, the Romani people. Not even talking about Hitler's death divisions in Russia, that killed Slavs. So we gotta teach about all that. One of the worst moments in human history, where children were swiped out of the hands of mothers and shoved into gas chambers before being executed. But we gotta do it with no swear words. I forget the name of the book, and I've been trying to find it ever since I was, I, I became an adult, right? When I was in elementary school, I think it was fifth grade, I stumbled upon a book that talked about the Holocaust. And I had no clue about the Holocaust at all. I, I had no knowledge of it. Like if somebody said the Holocaust, it was like, oh, that bad thing or whatever, right? I didn't really know much about it. And the book talked about like a child's perspective of the Holocaust. And their parents dying, and their family dying, and being taken away from their, their home. And that book legitimately made me cry as like a fifth grader. The book is called Night? You might be talking, it might be. I'll have to check after stream. I forget the exact name of the book. But I remember having an extremely emotional experience with this book. Going in basically knowing none of the history and then leaving in legitimate, like literal tears after being moved about that history. And you wanna know what? They described some pretty horrific stuff in that book. Because it's kinda hard to not get into details or how horrific it is when talking about the Holocaust. And this, I think epitomizes the American like viewing of education in children. Where, where violence, shootings, killings, genocide, the Holocaust, all these things, perfectly fine. To like show kids and stuff. Well, apparently the Holocaust, I guess that's on the ropes right now. But when it comes to cuss words, or even just someone being naked, now that's across the line when it comes to education. Mouse doesn't cross any lines that goes too far for an eighth grade classroom. This is somebody being a fucking Puritan at the expense of their children's education in one of the most horrific and important historical events in modern history. And it's disgusting. And it shows that every single one of those board members who didn't stop to think about what is gonna replace this book in the student's curriculum? Or what does this mean to novels about, like by Mark Twain? Or other books like To Kill a Mockingbird that the article mentions, that also has swear words in it? What does it mean to those novels? What does it mean for those books? And they don't answer that question. They just say, oh, we'll answer that question another day. And at the same day, time, that they're too worried about seeing, oh, a naked body in a book about the Holocaust? Or a swear word in again, a book about the fucking Holocaust? We have synagogues in the United States being attacked. This is a week ago. This just happened a week ago. That the FBI had to storm a Texas synagogue to release hostages because a gunman took it over. That's just one instance. We never even covered on the channel how at the end of last year, a man who slaughtered people at a synagogue was sentenced, I believe thirty years after he slaughtered local Jews at a synagogue before trying to burn down a local mosque. Anti-Semitic hate crimes are on the rise in the United States. And the main priority, instead of teaching about the history of antisemitism or the history of genocide and authoritarianism, so our children don't repeat the mistakes of past human beings, the main priority is protecting the children from cuss words. Not protecting the children from antisemitism and hatred. I'm sure if one of these kids walked up to the Nazis in the camp and pulled on his arm and it was like, hello sir, remember slaughtering us, all of that, perfectly fine for human conception of the eyes, but don't do it while swearing. That would cross a line. It's the Holocaust. People fucking were slaughtered en masse. I don't know like, why this is your priority? Definitely, when we talk about this book in specifics, this book did something a lot of books about the Holocaust can't. And that is grip you in and actually pull you in and describe it in a way that is consumable to children. It is very difficult to take an event like the Holocaust and make it consumable for children. And they took one of the best examples, a Pulitzer Prize winning example, and banned it. Great. By the way, just to make you doomer, somebody brought this up to me in chat before we started, and I, and I wanted to include this. Children, uh, at the moment are, uh, let's just say not getting the best education about the Holocaust. Because one-third of Canadian and American students think the Holocaust to some extent was fabricated. Let's get specific. "Around a third of Canadian and American students questioned whether the Holocaust actually happened, according to a study commissioned by the Canadian charity Liberation Seventy-Five." Now, let's get into specifics. I wonder why they think such a horrific fucking thing. "More than three thousand students in grade six to twelve were surveyed before a two-day virtual conference." Oh wait, and by the way, eighth grade, right in the middle here, we're talking about where this book was banned for. And then again, after the event, to assess what they think they knew about the Holocaust and antisemitism. "One in three of our respondents stated that they believe that the Holocaust was fabricated, fabricated, or not reported in a way that was accurate to what actually happened," said Alex Leonard, researcher and assistant professor of political science at the US Naval Academy. I wonder why they would think that. "Of the students that responded, we also found that students weren't getting information consistently in the classroom." So they were looking elsewhere for information. Forty percent, which is slightly higher than the one-third who thinks it was fabricated, were looking at social media, TikTok, and Instagram. If our schools don't give children a honest retelling of history of the Holocaust, swear words included, they're gonna go learn it from fucking TikTok. I'm sorry, but I don't need people from TikTok teaching the next generation of Americans about the Holocaust, okay? They wanna talk about Gemini things or devious licks, that's their business. Holocaust education is not the business of wine moms on TikTok, okay? It is the business of education professionals. It takes people years to figure out how to properly teach children about events like this. And Mouse is the result of one of those endeavors. And if you throw out all that work that people have done because you're a fucking Puritan, then TikTok is gonna do the job for you. Does a well-rounded education of the Holocaust require Mouse? No, not necessarily. Not necessarily. But the problem is, this Tennessee school board didn't even offer a replacement for the book in the school's curriculum. And then when they said, wait, what about To Kill a Mockingbird? What about all these other books that include swear words? What was their response? I don't know, we'll talk about that another day. They can't even face the logical conclusion of what they're doing. That's the problem. How do you? Let's keep going, because I could do this all day. So it seems though, that this has gotten uh, a response, because people, you know, are a little angry about how uh, the Holocaust is being taught about in public schools. And it seems that the United States Holocaust Museum has decided to comment saying, "The book has played a vital role in educating about the Holocaust through sharing detailed and personal experiences of victims and survivors. On the eve of International Holocaust Remembrance Day," today is now Holocaust Remembrance Day, by the way, "it is more important than ever for students to learn the history. Teaching about the Holocaust using books like Mouse can inspire students to think critically about the past and their own roles and responsibilities today. For those looking to teach about the Holocaust, find lesson plans and resources here." I could not even ma- imagine the shame I would feel if my local school board got dunked on by the United States Holocaust Museum. I could not possibly imagine the shame I would feel on a personal level. I couldn't. By the way, there are people trying to spring into action, like this individual who is offering free online courses for any McMinn County high school student interested in reading the book Mouse and has uh, left registration details online. There are also people in the replies of this tweet offering to pay for the book for any student in the school board who would like to read Mouse. The only critique, let me read, let me read a few things from chat, see what you guys think. The only critique I saw of Mouse being taught was it, it was a fictional and could be misunderstood due to the fictional nature of the book. But these uh, are, there are countless firsthand accounts and books and resources that could be used in place of it. But no, they don't want that. The problem is, I could, I could understand that criticism, possibly. Um, I don't think it really would hold up. But here's my main response to that, but that isn't the criticism the school board's making, by the way. That's completely separate. They're angry that there's fucking swear words in the book. A book about the Holocaust, by the way, describing an event where six million Jews were, were killed, slaughtered. If you teach it in a classroom, when the students come together, they're probably gonna talk to a teacher about it. And the teacher would probably make it very clear that what's being talking about, and what's being talked about in the book actually happened. And so, I don't understand. If anything, if that criticism did hold water, then we would want this to be taught about in public schools. Definitely since it's an influential book and won the fucking Pulitzer Prize. Because that would be the best environment for them to consume the book, if that was a concern, which I don't really think it is. But Dylan, don't you think it's a good idea to protect our high school students from harmful ideas like swear words? Yes. So let me just, let me just wear, let's, let's weigh the impact for a second. Okay, Holocaust? Oh, that, well, that's pretty bad. Or swear words? Oh my goodness, out of control. Truly, we've, the, the McMinn County School Board has decided uh, what they think is worse. Oh yes, also, I would like to also bring up the fact that no eighth grader in America has yet to uh, figure out what a swear word is. So surely this book will stop them from learning. Also, wouldn't want to depict like a Nazi saying fuck you to a Jew, because you wouldn't wanna what? Depict them in a bad light? Like I, I'm sorry, this shit is, this is literally the stupidest shit on the planet. I don't even know what to say, okay? I'm actually interested, what are the comments on this? By the way, I'm sorry, if you look, look at these comments, "As if To Kill a Mockingbird has not been extracted from many schools by the left." The priority here for Susan isn't children's education, okay? It isn't, how do we best like, teach about the Holocaust and stop it from happening again? It's, well, how do we use this to complain about the left? Also, I do wanna say that like, the way they talk about the mouse being naked, or like the nudity in Mouse makes you think like they had like a sex scene, that's not true. I think I read one of the comments to bring it up, and this is making me remember. I'm pretty sure it's like a scene where the now, the Nazi, I thought I was supposed to say the Nazis. The na- I almost said it again. The Nazis stripped the Jews. Which did happen. So if you're describing an event that happened, like the Nazis stripping the Jews to humiliate them and remove them of their clothing, I think depicting it in a book presented to eighth graders, not fucking toddlers, I think is perfectly appropriate. Not to mention, this is probably the age these children would be learning about sex at anyway. But now that I think about it, the school board is probably against sex education as well. I'm gonna be completely honest. Okay. That's enough of that. This shit pissed me off a lot. And I should probably move on before I get any mad, any madder. I remember, and by the way, this is the type of shit this leads to. I remember when I was dating my ex, right? Um, she worked at the Holocaust Museum in DC. And the first thing, uh, the first tour she gave was supposed to be to friends and family to give her like, like a experience of touring somebody at the Holocaust Museum. And to make her like, you know, slide into it comfortably. This is like a thing that they do there for like new recruits or whatever. And I remember the day I went, I was walking in and outside, there was these dipshit fucking lead chip eating motherfuckers. I'm so, excuse my language. I'm now banned from McMinn County in Tennessee. Who were outside protesting abortion. Why would anti-abortion protesters be protesting the Holocaust Museum in DC? I'll tell you exactly why. They had signs that had fetuses on one side and then Holocaust victims on the other, and it said, "Stop the modern day Holocaust." Not only is that insulting to Holocaust victims and those who had to suffer during the Holocaust, but on that specific day, there were actual Holocaust victims at the museum giving testimony. Meaning that victims of the Holocaust had to walk into the Holocaust Museum and see people comparing their suffering and the Holocaust they personally went through to abortion. That is why we need to teach people about the Holocaust. The one in three statistic about children is already concerning. But we've got grown ass fucking adults who need to be educated about the Holocaust. Hell, Marjorie Taylor Greene, a fucking congressperson, had to be educated about the Holocaust and had to, and had to apologize after visiting the United States Holocaust Museum for comparing it, uh, comparing vaccines and vaccine mandates and masks to the Holocaust. I grew up, this is from a comment in chat from AK Cruiser. "I grew up in Catholic schools. We were used as children at protests like this all the time. We never knew who, what, or why we were protesting. Only told that you get extra credit if you stand here with a sign and pray." Okay, give me a second. I, somebody just sent me the picture of the nudity, and I obviously can't show it on stream, but is this really it? No, fuck it, I can show this on screen, actually. I'll be fine. I don't even think I'll get banned. Look, this is it. This is it. You can't even see anything. They're mice, by the way. Animals are always naked, okay? But you can't even see anything. It's literally just a proper description of what happened at the Holocaust. During the Holocaust, that is. "If you had still a healthy body to work, they passed you through and gave you another uniform until it came to the next selection. When first I came, I was very strong then, and came well to the good side. The ones who had not been so lucky, the SS wrote down their number and sent them to the other side, AKA killed them." This is quite literally just a description of events. This is fucking disgusting. Every single person on that school board knows nothing about education. I'm sorry, if this, you think this is too much for eighth graders? Eighth graders, by the way. I remember being in eighth grade, okay? In eighth grade, this was the least of my concerns for what was corrupting me, okay? I, what, I actually think it was in eighth grade where I was, I was literally mugging kids in school bathrooms, okay? So this was the least of my concerns, okay? I would like some proper education that would have gotten me interested. Okay, something like this. Jesus Christ. Okay. Let's move on. I, I honestly can't. That was a recommended book in high school for me when we did a Holocaust unit? Well, yeah, because it's a good book. Ah, okay, we're gonna do this story in a bit, okay? Let's move on to something- Okay, we're gonna do this story in a bit. Okay, let's move on to something simpler, okay?